Okay, this Town of Adams Board of Selectmen meeting Wednesday, March 17th, 2021 is now in session. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, July 2nd, and December 23rd orders imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public has been permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Attending remotely are all members of the Board of Selectmen, including myself, Chair Christine Hoyt, Vice Chair Rick Blanchard, Member John Duval, and Member Joe Novak. We've posted today's agenda in accordance with open meeting law, which included the call-in information for today's meeting. And despite our best efforts, if we're not able to provide for real-time access for the public to participate in today's meeting, a recording can be made available upon request, as this meeting is being recorded using the Zoom platform. As we are participating remotely, I will remind members of the Board of Selectmen that all votes taken during this meeting will be done so by roll call vote. I will state the member's name and ask for their vote for each vote necessary today. Just so that everybody knows who's in the room, as I mentioned, the four members of the Board of Selectmen are participating, as well as Town Administrator Jay Green, we have Town Council Ed St. John III, looks like Police Chief Scott Kelly, members of the Police Department Curtis Crane, as well as Travis Cunningham. Things just shifted on my screen. Building Commissioner Jerry Garner. Looks like we have Zoning Board Member Wayne Piagie. Deb Dunlap, Town Administrator and Board of Selectmen Admin Assistant. Members of the media Jack Arino, Scott Stafford, and Northern Berkshire Community Television, which makes it possible for us to broadcast this live in people's homes. Looks like DPW Director Robert Tober. And Member of the Public Howard Rosenberg. And Robert Pitco from Adams Hometown Market, sorry. You did all shift on the screen and like moved and it threw everything off, but I think that I got everybody who is on the call. And I will do my best to update those of you on the phone as to who else enters the virtual room as we continue to move forward with tonight's meeting. Any questions on the housekeeping stuff? I'll just remind people to have themselves muted unless it is your turn to talk. It just helps with keep the background noise to a minimum. I am under the impression that I might have some background noise with my headphones, so if that is the case, I do just ask that somebody please politely let me know that in the chat box. Okay, with all of that, I think we'll go ahead and I will ask all of you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States
of America
and to the republic
for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice
for all.
for all.
Thank you very much. The first item of business is the approval of minutes for the March 3rd, 2021 meeting.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 3rd, 2021, regular board meeting, and waive the reading of the minutes.
Thank you. I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Joe. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. It is a roll call vote. Rick?
Abstain.
Abstain. John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And it is a yes from Christine. Thank you very much. That passes. That brings us to public comment. Is there anybody on the call that wishes to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening? Yep, I have Robert Pitco and I think Chief Kelly.
Yes, I was
This is a tag team announcement. Is that correct?
Yes, I was trying to get unmuted. Wanted to, and again, acknowledge the people that are involved with this kind of announcement. Mr. Pitco, who is, who you may know is a representative of Adams Hometown Market. And Officer Crane, who is our canine officer. And I'm going to give a brief summary of what's going on. These two gentlemen also can interject and I'm sure add something if they need to. But a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Pitco, Hometown Market, in conjunction with the Hometown Foundation, reached out to Officer Crane in reference to a program that they have where they donate canines to police departments. And I am so, so happy to say that they chose Adams, the Town of Adams and the Adams Police Department, to donate a canine. Now briefly, what this is, is they donate the dog, the training, and five years worth of maintenance on this dog. Briefly, maintenance is vet bills, food, equipment, things such as that. And they cover it for five years. They do five years more than putting a actual dollar amount because these things can vary. So the commitment to our canines and the, you know, 18, I believe at this point, that they have donated throughout this state and Connecticut is the dedication of a timeframe. So it's for any department, it is a great expense that they have taken on and a huge help, especially during these times. And again, I cannot say enough, and it is coming, quite frankly, at a time that, you know, Kumar has worked eight years, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Officer Crane, but eight years, and he is starting to reach his time of retirement. Generally, you're really pushing a police canine if you work them into like 10 years. So what a wonderful thing this is. It couldn't have came at a better time. And we are just so happy to be a part of this and be chosen. So it is absolutely my pleasure to kind of, you know, put this out there and announce that, you know, we're moving forward with this.
Thank you, Chief. Bob, you also had your hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, say that the fact that, yeah, the Hometown Foundation is, we give to many charitable donations throughout the year. We're really big into first responders. We've done a drive for the fire department. Right now, we're doing one for Meals on Wheels. Adams Hometown Market is all about a community. We are community stores. You will find us in small-town communities such as Adam, Massachusetts, and we want to make sure that we are cemented and the town knows that we are here for the town. That's our goal as a company. That's our goal as a store. I am a Town of Adams resident. I am glad to represent the store and be someone that's going to take advantage of this opportunity that, knowing that our town is going to have a police dog coming forward when Kumar finally reaches his retirement.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I think you're also at your two-year anniversary of being open here in the Town of Adams. And I remember I was like, I knew it was closed. And I knew that at the time of the ribbon cutting, you were very generous with some contributions to our community. And I'm really happy to see this donation to our police department. And I know Officer Crane is on the call too, so I don't know if Officer Crane would like to say anything.
Sure. Yeah, we're very grateful. And this is something that's kind of unheard of. I mentioned it to the guys around the county and they're all jealous now because people die for this chance. So we're very lucky, very lucky. I could only sustain fundraising for so long on my own. And, but yep. Thank you.
Chief, I'd like to add, and then we'll close if you would like, but, you know, I know just in my short time here that Kumar has been a huge community asset, more than just a police canine. Officer Crane has done so much work with him that there is no question that he will continue this with what I believe we are going to name Adam. And so that's, you know, I'm just, I'm looking forward to the future and I know what Officer Crane has done with Kumar over the last eight years, and I absolutely see it just moving forward. And again, I can't, I can't express how grateful we are for this opportunity.
Wonderful. Thank you. And did you just announce a name too? Is that what I heard? Wonderful.
Let me unmute again. Yes. And when we, when we spoke about this, Bob and Curtis, we actually spoke and that was one of the things that they laid out is, you know what, you name it Adam. Okay, we name it Adam. So.
Well, I look forward to meeting Adam. Very nice.
Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you. And with an announcement like that, you know, if there's anybody from the board, I know that's not normal during public comment, but if there's any member of the board that wanted to say something, by all means, go ahead. And Rick, I usually start with you.
Yeah, I just like to add my appreciation to Adams Hometown Market. It is a very generous donation to the town. And we definitely appreciate it.
Thank you. John?
When the discussion began, I was a little concerned about where's first Kumar, but I'm glad that he's getting close to his retirement. And I agree with the chief, he has definitely been a great community asset for the Town of Adams. And we appreciate Officer Crane and all the work that he has done with his teammate Kumar. And also, as Rick mentioned, thank you to Adams Hometown Market. Two years ago, again, just glad that we have you in our community and you have been a major supporter of many of the events and organizations in our town and hope that continues for a long time. Thank you.
Joe, anything?
Yes, I too would like to thank the Adams Hometown Market, and I think the key word is hometown. And that's something that we here in Adams should all be proud of. I'm so happy that Adams Hometown Market stepped forward and took a leap to come to Adams. And once again, thank you so, so much and well appreciated by all. Thanks again. Bye-bye. That's it.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the comments. All right. Well, we can continue on with public comment if there's anybody else who's on the call. It's a really hard transition to make, by the way, like after such exciting news. But if there's anybody else who's on the call who wishes to speak to the Board of Selectmen under public comment, now would be the time. All right. Hearing none. I will go ahead and close public comment and we will open it to new business. And the first item under new business, I think Chief and I think Chief, you were going to handle this one and walk us through. This is the annual nomination of Inspector of Animals for the term May 1st, 2021 to April 30th, 2022 for Kim Witick. Oh, I think you're still on mute. Sorry.
No, thank you. I think at this point, what, there was some questions and some information that I could gather for the selectmen, and I think that's what I needed at this point, is what is needed for me. And there's two ways. It can either be broached right now or you can send me a direct email. And in response, I will return in kind with that information to every one of the board members.
That's in relation, Chief, to Joe, your request at previous meetings regarding information from the Animal Control Officer herself. So Chief Kelly's willing to take feedback when you folks would like to provide it to him in terms of what data or information you'd like to have in terms of the new business A. That's the annual nomination for Inspector of Animals regarding the Department of Agriculture Resources. That's required. So that's what's actually actionable in front of you this evening.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Jay.
No, no worries, Chief. It reminds me of your interview where we had to unmute you first and then we lost internet connection. So you're in good, you're in good company.
And thank you both for taking that on as I was trying to handle some technology on my end and switch out some earbuds. Okay, so the business in front of us is these annual nomination of Inspector of Animals. The board is probably reminded that this comes off-cycle from our annual appointments and it's a little bit of a different appointment anyway. So this is the formal process to do this. So I do need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the board nominate for Inspector of Animals Kimberly Witick.
Okay, I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. And that is for the term May 1st to April 30th of next year, right?
Correct. Yes. So if that could be amended, Rick, are you okay with amending that to include those dates?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And John, you're still okay with seconding that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the nomination of Inspector of Animals? Okay, hearing none. It is a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine. All right. Thank you very much. Chief, it looks like the next item is also yours. This is a presentation regarding the Adams Police Department's social media neighborhood watch program and the connection with Ring. And I think you have Detective Cunningham on the call as well to help with that.
I do. And actually, I'm going to speak really briefly and then turn it over to him. Again, this was something that a couple of weeks was brought to my attention. Ring had reached out to Detective Cunningham and he has been the the lynchpin for getting this started. And at this point, the things that have rolled out, I have received positive comments overall. So I would like Detective Cunningham to go into what this is, what it entails, what our citizens can use it for, and in turn, what we can use it for. So Detective Cunningham?
Hi, good evening. Rick can hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So what we have now is a new program through Ring called Neighbors. It's an application you can download on your phone. You can access it on your computer. And what it does is it connects us to both people that utilize the application as well as people that have Ring devices. And one of the things that allows us to do, it's another form of social media connection with law enforcement. And this helps us, it has a public safety kind of focus. And what I mean by that is if there's an incident, we can send out alerts through the Ring application. And it targets people that have the application within the town. It's a geofence. So we can find specific areas. If we were looking for information or advising people within the community in a certain area, we could explain to them, you know, they're, we're looking for surveillance footage, for instance, if there was a certain incident. Now, one of the things that's nice about this application is that it's all anonymous. A lot of people have computations that it may be something that we can pull data from people, but we can't. We can merely request data from people, such as if you have a Ring doorbell camera and there's an incident in your neighborhood, we can, through this application, request a certain neighborhood or even the entire town and ask those people who have that device, who are assigned on, if anybody wishes or has any information. And all the information that they allow us to see is all anonymous. The only way we'd actually be able to contact them is if they either contacted the department through our request, but we would actually have no information on who they are, where the incident occurred. So this, it's really helpful as a community member because people don't want to feel like they're being targeted or have any other data easily accessed. I myself have a Ring camera. I know a lot of people in the community do. And it's, it's a really good app if there's, not just for investigations, but for alerts. And what I mean by if there's a power outage or a tree down, we can, we have yet to utilize this application to its full extent. But one of the things that we have been promoting is called the 9:00 PM routine. And that's something started by a department in Miami. And it's basically creating a routine to lock your doors, turn your lights, and just make sure your belongings are safe. So these are things that the Neighbors app have kind of helped us do, facilitate. And it's just another good social media tool and an outlet for the community to contact us and us to reach out through the community.
I would also like to add that, again, with this, what I have seen roll out thus far has had really positive feedback from the community. So when you have that type of feedback, you know that you're doing something right. So this has thus far worked really well and the community seems to really appreciate it.
And one thing too, this is all free. This application, you don't have to have a Ring doorbell, any of the devices. You can log on and it is kind of like a virtual neighborhood watch. It's a community of anonymous people that can, if there's a concern, let's say some in the community saw something that maybe they didn't feel to call the police, but it was suspicious, they could put an alert through the Ring app. We would be notified. I would still advise to call the police department, but it also allows us another avenue to investigate things.
I will just add that I added the Neighbors app. I saw the press release and I added the app. And it was like just before the Board of Selectmen meeting, two weeks ago, there was a notification that came up through the app telling me that there was a water main breakup on Howland Ave. And we had the Superintendent John Barrett coming to speak to our meeting an hour and a half after I got that alert. So I was able to like talk to him and have him get that information out during one of these meetings. But that's where I saw, you know, this alert system could be super helpful. So I enjoyed the app.
It's one of those things where as far as the full expansion of it, the community has to be engaged. So as long as we continue our engagement and we can hopefully rely on the community to continue theirs. So that's why we continue with Facebook as our, really our flagship to social media and to try to like get our main information out. And our Ring application is a secondary way, but more of a direct safety and an investigatory tool that we could use. But people post pictures of like animals or bears walking through their yard. And those are things that we see a lot of. And while that has less to do with law enforcement, it's a good tool for neighbors to be aware of, you know, if there's a bear in the neighborhood, especially with, you know, springtime coming, to alert neighbors. And these are good things and like this anonymous neighborhood watch through the Neighbors app program.
I was trying to pull up like the Ring website to share my screen, but it's not. It's not working as well as it does on my phone. So. But I will just show folks one of the posts from, if I can just pull this up. So this is part of what the Police Department has been sharing on social media every night. I think you were doing this two, three weeks.
We did it for two weeks. Yeah. It's supposed to just instill a routine with people. It's something that we're going to continue with, but not as, not a daily update. We don't want to inundate our social media or people with this information. We just wanted to get people going on a routine to remember to, again, lock your vehicles, check for valuables, and do things just to protect yourself. It's preventative measures.
What the two-week timeframe hopefully did was create a habit with, with people to, you know, go outside, make sure the doors are locked.
All right. At this point, I can open it up to any questions from the board. Rick?
I'm sorry. No, I don't have any questions. I have noticed the nine o'clock check thing.
John?
Yeah, I got a question about the, the app itself. So what's the name of this app?
It's called Ring Neighbors App. So, neighbor. Yep. So if you go to either an Android or iOS device, an iPhone, you should be able to download it. It's completely free. That's one of the big things that, that sold us on it. We're actually one of only, I believe, 26 departments in Massachusetts that utilize it. We're the only one, I think, west of Springfield. So we're the only one in Berkshire County that utilizes this app. And it's, it's a tool. We, we like to utilize any tool that we can have to engage with the community, just as another outlet and another, another way that we can try to find people that may not have direct access or have, be nervous to contact police. So this is a good avenue that we can take.
Okay. I'll just curious and I don't want to, you know, this is all excellent. I'm glad we're doing this. But how do you control individuals that we've seen on social media, I don't know if you can, that say things or they're not from here, maybe they're Russian box, who knows?
So Ring is, so let's say I were to post something. It's not something like typical social media. They actually have a person verifying what I am writing and that on our law enforcement end, that it meets the criterion of either a public safety announcement or a criminal announcement, something that is within their parameters. And on the same end, for the people that are commenting, they have strong filters which can be controlled. So they have a lot, it's definitely more of a limited access forum. And a lot of the, the comment section, I don't think it's as strong as the, as something like Facebook or Instagram. So it's, it's more utilized in the, like the, the video postings and people can comment on that. But again, I think this is another thing where it's, there's stronger controls on the Ring side.
Okay, great to hear. Thank you. And also, the 9:00 PM routine, I've also noticed that it has reminded me to, you know, take care of the locking up the cars, things like that. Because every year it happens, somewhat, you know, there's a street where some things were taken from vehicles and majority of the time, and I don't know for sure, but from what I believe is that people just leave their cars unlocked, their garage unlocked. That's, that's the reason these, a lot of these things happen.
And that's exactly why we did it. The, the, from law enforcement perspective, when we see vehicle breaks or, or these break-ins into sheds and things like that, almost always they're unlocked. And this is something that if we can help people get ahead of it, then we don't, it saves everybody. It saves the public from having their possessions lost or stolen. And it cuts down on the volume of things that we have to investigate. So it saves everybody a little bit.
Yeah, these are truly crimes of opportunity. So if you, if you help by leaving these, these things unlocked and, and leaving stuff out in your yard, then it just makes it that much. then uh it just makes it that much easier.
Right. Okay, both are great. Uh, two more tools for your toolbox. I think if these are both uh great uh applications, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And John, um, I did just share the website, like, so if you don't go into the App Store, you could go to ring.com backslash neighbors. Um, and you can download it through there.
Okay, I'll be doing that this evening. Thank you.
Joe, any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, um, as a selectman, um, I think safety is one of the main concerns uh I have and anything we can do to make Adams a safer community, um, I'm for. Um, and just to comment kind of to uh uh what Member Duval had mentioned, um, anonymous, when people give things uh through social media anonymous, sometime that creates an opening for like false uh pretenses. Um, is that something that uh is checked? Um, because I don't really understand the process that we're speaking to. I understand what it's trying to do, but when you get anonymous people coming on, uh, could they spread false rumors like, you know, somebody's running around with a gun in a certain neighborhood and knowing that it's false?
So um. That's, well, I'll just say this and I'll let Detective Cunningham say it. That is where we have to do our due diligence. If we, if we get a uh something come into us, a tip of some kind, then that's where it falls on us. Uh, we must do our due diligence. We have to follow up and make sure that there are fact, this is fact-based. Uh, so, you know, I I think that that answers the question to that. We we have to then uh do what we do as a police department, so we cover our bases there.
Yeah, exactly what the chief said. Um, just to reiterate, these uh anonymous tips are less in the form of text messages. These are, when we're requesting information from people in the Ring Neighbors App, there's, because Ring devices are inherently video devices, we're looking for video um from their devices. And again, all that information is on the user's end. So if, uh, Joe, if you were to have a Ring device at your house and you captured an incident in front of your house, even if I know as law enforcement that you have a Ring camera and I request it through the app, you can deny it through the app. You don't have to, you make it available. That's what the great part is as a user end, that you have the full choice to make that information available. And again, it's it's primarily a video sharing um evidentiary thing for us.
Okay, yeah, because my concern, once again, if, you know, people that plan things, they can call and say, well, jeez, you know, we got somebody in a neighborhood running around with a gun with an ulterior motive, knowing that our police are going to be rushing up there and, you know, they have something else planned that would deter uh you from coming to uh what they would probably be trying to do illegally. But that's, that's what I just surmise. I just don't like anonymous uh information. It sometime can be uh more destructive than helpful. And um I understand what you have just said, so you do your due diligence and uh that's all I have. Thank you.
That, that's right, and I'll just follow up on that by saying any type of social media platform is subject to that. I think anyone can get on there and do those things. Again, it falls on us uh because we cannot ignore uh if we have a tip or a suggestion or this type of crime is going on in my neighborhood. We certainly can't ignore it, but what we can do is follow up and ascertain whether that is a a credible uh tip or not. So that, that's, again, that's on us.
Okay, thank you very much.
In fact, can I just add? Yeah, it it may be anonymous, but you have to have an account. You have to be a member of the Ring Neighborhood Group, so they know who's sending that in.
Well, then it's no longer anonymous.
Well, so to just clarify on how the anonymity works. So if there was an incident and we were to have to, as law enforcement, to have to ascertain somebody's identity, we would have to uh provide a search warrant for that, which would require a significant threshold um to go forward to get that information. So that's not something that would be um uh an everyday occurrence. This is, and that wouldn't be the 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 avenue that we would pursue. These would be for the most um uh extreme circumstances or something. And that's what we would do with any social media application where there was some sort of um uh an act that we needed to identify that party.
Anything else on the Ring app or the Neighbors app? All right. Thank you, Chief Kelly. Thank you, Detective Cunningham, for your presentation this evening and and making us all more aware of the tools that you have at your disposal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
And just a a a plug, if you aren't following the Adams Police Department on Facebook, I would suggest that you do so. There's always some really good information there um in addition to the information that is in this app. Thank you. So that brings us to item C under new business review and approval of a two-six-eight A, Section nineteen Disclosure of Financial Interest Determination by Appointing Authority, which is the Board of Selectmen for Zoning Board of Appeals member Wayne Piagji. So I know that Mr. Piagji is on the call. I believe that Mr. Garner is also on the call um to talk us through this matter. Jerry, are you there and can you speak to this?
Uh, yes, this form is uh from the Ethics Commission. I contacted the Ethics Commission uh regarding Mr. Piagji's um um conflict of interest. Um, the conflict of interest is that he is in a budding property to the Cumberland Farms project that's going to be appearing, uh, happening on Commercial Street. Um, the um budding property owner uh is possibly going to have a financial gain um in accordance with the law, um, if he sits on the board and he'll have a conflict of interest. So this form that's in front of you, what this says is that um basically is that the Select Board is letting him, allowing him to sit on the board and act as a member, an active participant on the board uh to conduct himself in an appropriate manner out of his, obviously, and uh make a decision based on the facts of the application and that there is no conflict of interest. Now, that being said, uh, when you say there's a financial gain uh that he is going to be getting, um, we're talking about an assessed value. Um, it is, that's the only financial game and only conflict that he has. So if the assessed value of his property goes up, he could possibly get a financial gain. Being this is a gas station, the chances of that happening are slim to none um judging by everything that I've read on this. Um, and um I think Mr. Piagji would really like to be an active part of this board, even on this application, and doesn't feel like he has any conflicts uh with regards to this application. Um, uh, he can speak further to that if he would like. Um, but I do believe that um we're taking the appropriate steps to um to protect the town by doing this. And um I think uh Mr. St. John would like to chime in on that additionally. I I would like that.
Yeah, I would like to chime in on that too. What what you have to determine under the Conflict of Interest Law is uh one, it looks like one of, one of two or one or both of these factors that uh Mr. Piagji's interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the town may expect from him. Uh, and or if the particular matter involves a determination of general policy in the interests of Mr. Piagji or members of his family is shared with a substantial segment of the town, uh, you can make that determination as to whether to uh sign off on that. That has to be done in writing, so I think you need to have a bit of a discussion about whether the interest he has is insubstantial or whether it's shared by a substantial segment of the town.
So the board does have in front of them the um the instructions for the disclosure as well as uh the disclosure that has been submitted by Mr. Piagji uh for review. We'll open it up. For any questions to Mr. Piagji, Mr. Varner, or to um Town Council or any members of the board.
For uh the deliberation begins.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, I just want to let the board know that the matter that is anticipated to be in front of the zoning board, of which Mr. Piagji would have a role on, or role in, I should say, is the Cumberland Farms project will require a uh special permit from the zoning board in order to operate twenty-four hours a day. That is the only matter that will be in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Cumberland Farms project is is that narrow scope of it. So that is the the matter that will be in front of Wayne. Um, if that helps you with your deliberation tonight in terms of of applying the legal standard uh to your deliberation.
I also just wanted to point out, I know that um we've been making several appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think the Board of Selectmen is aware that this is a a board that um we've had minimal participation um from the community to serve on this board. And we've uh been making efforts to recruit individuals, but we are still a a small board, a small zoning board of appeals, um even with the matters on the agenda this evening. If we were to go forward with them, that would bring us to five full-time members and one alternate, leaving two alternate seats. So the um, I I thank Mr. Piagji for um going forward in this process um to make this determination so that he can continue to serve and that the zoning board can continue to operate um as there are just only so many of you on the zoning board uh to be hearing cases. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that as well. So I can't open it up for any questions. Rick, do you have anything?
I don't have any questions, so to speak. My biggest concern isn't with the financial, it's that he lives in the neighborhood and he's going to have to live next door to someone who might object to this. And I'm sure he's taken that into consideration and he could actually uh step aside for that matter. But I I really don't think he's going to gain, so to speak, from sitting on that.
Thank you, Rick. John, do you have anything?
Um, no, I have no, no problem with um Mr. Piagji to be able to continue to serve on the board um when the twenty-four hour um question comes up. I have no, no issue with financial or gain or loss of that, so I'll be with him serving uh on the board. I'm good.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, just a question perhaps to Town Council or uh Jerry. Uh, when we use the word a butters, um, how how is in a butter, do they have to be touching the property in question or within a geographical distance to uh where the Cumberland Farms is going to be?
Um, under my definition, a butter is anyone that's within three hundred feet of the property line of Cumberland Farms.
Okay, so it's three hundred feet, right? Is that correct, um, uh, Mr. St. John?
I agree with that.
Okay, and the other question I have, um, it's kind of uh centered around what uh Member Blan- uh Vice Chair Blanchard on mentioned. I know in print, um, it was in I Berkshires that Mr. Piagji came out uh in stating that he was for the uh Cumberland Farms uh locating to that particular site. So he's made it known publicly already his feelings and I'm not sure I'm s- very comfortable with that. And if we have a certain members, as I see in our um agenda coming up, we'll be appointing uh one person uh as a member, a voting member, and the other as an alternative, al- alternate who can be a voting member if they don't have the needed number there. So um I just uh questioned that, that um it's been made public, uh, Mr. Piagji's view of the uh uh Cumberland Farms at that location. And uh so that's something that I I just wonder if that makes a difference or not. As far as, as Member Duval said, I don't see uh the financial gain um to Mr. Piagji um making a decision, but he's already kind of let the uh genie out of the box, in other words, and that's all I have.
I gu- I guess um I'd like to speak to that. Um, this is only regarding the twenty-four hour application, the special permit for being open twenty-four hours. This, this really has nothing to do with the um actual location or the construction of the Cumberland Farms. So you have to keep that in consideration, that it's a very minimal part of the application. It may be, you know, big to some people, but it's just a very small part of this entire application.
Um, yeah, that may, that may be the way you look at it. Um, but once again, I just think that because uh his, he has made it known, that goes with the whole context of the Cumberland Farm, because that is part of what is Cumberland Farms is looking for. And a few times, we've been misconstrued, a few times I've heard from members of the board and others, the zoning board, this isn't the zoning board, this is the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they're two different um, two different committees or uh commissions.
Um, well, this has to still go to Planning Board, I guess.
Right, yes, it does, yep.
Right. I just want to preface that, because this has to go to Planning Board and pass Planning Board. So I just want to be clear that uh this still has to go through Planning Board and get through that process. This is just for the twenty-four hour operation, whether it's a year or a day, that's it.
Right, so what decision has to be made first through the planning be- board before it goes to the uh Zoning Board of Appeals?
No, this is just a a thing so that if this gets passed, then then it's a uh an easier process for the Planning Board because this decision's already made, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
So what would be the board's pleasure with regard to this item on the agenda?
Madam Chair, I I still have a question for Attorney St. John um in regards to the, my fellow board members' concern. Uh, I'd like to hear from him, legal counsel, that, does he see any conflict of interest in regards to um what's becoming in front of these zoning board for the twenty-four hour uh being open twenty-four hours, um, the statement that he's made in public? Is there any, do you see any conflict of interest?
Well, I don't see a conflict of interest. I see an issue that um about partiality, which would concern me. But I think as uh Jerry Garner pointed out, the issue is not over the approval of the location of the Cumberland Farms at that site. It's only about whether it's going to operate on a twenty-four hour basis. I would be concerned if Mr. Piagji was on the Planning Board and making comments about, I like this, before he even heard the evidence on it, pro or con. But if it's a matter of only involving whether it's open twenty-four hours, I'm not so concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Does the board wish to take this matter up with a motion and determining whether or not the financial interest that has been stated is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which uh the Town of Adams may be expecting from Mr. Piagji in his role on the Zoning Board of Appeals?
I will make a motion. I'm just now quite sure, quite sure what motion to make to approve the Section nineteen Disclosure and Financial Interest Determination or?
I think as I heard it from Attorney St. John, it would be to uh approve the disclosure, but also stating that the financial interest is not so substantial. Is that correct?
You actually said it very well. If you were to make a a motion to approve uh the Section nineteen disclosure, you would do so on one of the two bases that I gave to you, the one that I heard that makes mo- most sense. I don't mean to be telling you what to do, but it would be on the basis that the interest that he's talking about is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the town may expect from Mr. Piaghi. And if you could make a motion to that effect, that's what Ms. Hoyt was just referring to.
It's under the section um of page two of that document of the disclosure uh for the appointing authority. It is the second sentence there that's talking about the determination that needs to be made by the appointing authority.
All right, I'm gonna see where you're talking here. On the second page.
There's a paragraph about the for the appointing authority, middle of the page. Do you have it?
Listen to the second page, it's the actual application.
Yeah, so I had two copies in my packet, one is a full copy and one was partial copy. I'm wondering if you just have a partial copy.
I may have a full one, I don't know.
One was hole punched and that one was not complete, and then there's one that's stapled that is complete.
Then I only have a partial.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that the board approve the Section nineteen disclosure of financial interest determination due to the financial gains mentioned in Mr. Gaggy's application uh to be minimal. If at all.
Town Council, does that, I was gonna say, does that satisfy it, or would you like that rephrased a little bit?
Well, could the reason just be stated um as set forth in the statute, which I guess you have, Ms. Hoyt, but uh Mr. Blanchard does not have. Um I'll just read it again, that uh that the board has made a determination that Mr. Piaghi's interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the town may expect from him.
So moved.
Thank you, Member Blanchard, with with an assist from Town Council, I appreciate that. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this?
Uh yeah, this is a Joe, just one quick discussion. Um I realize when this will come up in front of the zoning board of appeals, uh the twenty-four hour um ability to get gas, that there'll be a public hearing, correct?
It it'll be a public meeting. Uh Mr. Garner, is it a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yep, okay, just wanted to make sure, okay.
Sorry, I was having trouble getting my phone.
That's that's okay. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing done? Oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
Sorry, sorry to cut you off there, just that I I agree with uh Attorney St. John in regards that this was the Planning Board, that a member could be asking for a a ten-foot fence or lights being dimmer or abramites being planted where they can gain uh something of that nature. Um and the other question is, Madam Chair, is there, for zoning board members, new members, is there any material that they can review prior to uh becoming a member, um or when they do become a member, to have an understanding what the responsibilities are and what they shouldn't shouldn't do? Is there anything we have, is there any documentation in that, in that matter?
There's uh, there's zoning board materials for um that they can read, uh to teach them how to be zoning board members. Um there are trainings available through BRPC, CPTC, Pioneer Regional Planning. Uh there's a multiple, there's multiple resources for training for these positions. Um the new members will have opportunities to seek those trainings. Um uh but there are um uh books, in fact, I'm looking at one right now, um that they can review to know what their responsibilities are.
Thank you, Jerry, that that reminded me of the BRPC. And Jay, that's something that the uh town would pay for for new members, right? To have some training, if it's uh if it's applicable?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, uh it is a roll call vote. Uh Rick?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Discussion, go ahead.
Does Wayne have anything?
You wanted to? If I can speak, um the only thing I can say is the only thing I want to add is when these meetings happen, thank you for getting us two new board members. First of all, um the likelihood of there only being five members present when we do that meeting uh is very strong. And if I back out of the meeting, that means there's only four people to vote on it. That means it has to be unanimous.
Right.
And Cumberland Farms may push it down the road, and I'd hate to see that happen because of something like this. That's that's my concern.
It's a valid concern. Thank you, Wayne.
Welcome.
Okay, to go back to your original question, yes.
So that that is your vote, okay, thank you. John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah, I I'm going to tepidly vote yes, and the reason I'm voting yes is because of uh Town Council uh saying that what we're uh looking at uh appears to be okay, so my vote is yes.
Okay, and it is a yes from me. Um so that is unanimous. Uh Town Council, you mentioned that this needs to be in writing, the, I believe that this needs to be in writing to Mr. Piaghi, do we have to also uh send something to the State Ethics?
I, um in my opinion, it's probably the best idea is to send it to the State Ethics Commission as well, just in case something comes up in the future. But definitely number one is to put it in writing what your reasoning is, and then send it to the State Ethics Commission.
Okay, and if I were to draft something, can you review it and make sure that it meets the tenants? Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Okay, Jerry, you're still on, right?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much. So um as I mentioned in the other item, we have been trying to fill the zoning board of appeals, and as Mr. Piaghi mentioned, we have uh recently appointed two members of the zoning board of appeals. Dave Ryan Miller has been serving uh as a temporary member uh for, I think, a year and a half or more. And has been serving as a temporary full member of the zoning board of appeals. The request this evening is to move uh Mr. Ryan Miller to an alternate on the zoning board of appeals uh to get him closer to not having to serve in this temporary role any longer, while we try to fill these uh these seats. Is that correct, Mr. Garner?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, we're we're trying to get Mr. Ryan Miller to to not have to serve any longer. He's been doing us a favor for a lot longer than he expected. I think he thought it was gonna be three months. So I do need a motion by the board to appoint uh David Ryan Miller as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals.
Um I I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Ryan Miller as an alternate member of the zoning board of appeals. And my reason for doing so is he's very knowledgeable and knows uh pretty much all about what needs to be done. So I happy to make that motion.
Thank you very much, Joe. Do I have a second?
I'll second, pending verification that that this is on the amended agenda? Because I don't have Mr. Ryan Miller on my agenda.
He is on the amended agenda.
Okay.
Yes.
I saw one come out.
And uh this is the reason for the amended agenda was for this item.
So seconded.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? And just to mention, um it had been brought to our attention that Mr. Ryan Miller was sitting in a full member seat. And in order to make that member seat available, he needed to be moved to an alternate, and that's the reason for the amended agenda. Okay, so if there's no other discussion, then I will take a roll call vote, Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. So as mentioned, that opens up the full uh member seat. This is a a term that would carry through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. In front of the board this evening, we do have a letter from Ray Gargan. Uh dear Select Board members, I'm writing to express my interest in becoming a member of the Adams zoning board of appeals. Adams has been my home since nineteen eighty-five. I am a founding member of Pro Adams Inc. and currently serve as co-chairman. In this capacity, I have been involved as a volunteer in many initiatives to benefit the town such as our events, Thunderfest, Ramble Fest, the Greylock Ramble, and Magicon. In addition, I have taken the lead in the creation of ExploreAdams.com and marketing efforts through traditional and social media to help engender a positive narrative about Adams. I have served as a volunteer on the Greylock Glen Outdoor Center Committee. I also served on the Short-lived Economic Development Committee formed by Mr. Mizuko. Recently, I became a town meeting voter where I took an interest in passing the forty R smart growth zoning. My career has been in the field of marketing communications, where I built and continuously operated a successful advertising and design agency for nearly forty years. This career has included many economic development projects, including some for Adams, such as marketing materials and the website for Greylock Glen. Currently, I am semi-retired and serving only a few clients from my home. My personal interests include environmentalism, local history, and arts and culture. I believe that the future success of Adams lies in balancing growth with the preservation of our community character and its natural, cultural, and agricultural assets. I hope to help find this balance as a member of the Adams zoning board of appeals. Sincerely, Raymond Gargan Jr. So with this application before the board, uh does anyone want to make a motion to appoint Ray Gargan to the uh zoning board of appeals?
I'll make a motion to appoint Raymond Gargan Jr. to the zoning board of appeals.
I have a motion by Rick, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John, any discussion?
Uh yes, I would just, uh this is Joe, um I would just like to say I wish we had more uh Ray Gargans in town. Um he's certainly, by reading that letter, he certainly has put himself right into Adams and uh thank him so much, and I'm sure when he's given the uh the opportunity, he'll serve well on the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you for that, Joe. If there's no other discussion, uh Rick? Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. So that does bring the um zoning board of appeals to five full members, one alternate serving in a temporary capacity, and the opportunity for two other alternates. Well, actually, three alternates, if we want to get Mr. Ryan Miller to take away his temporary status. Okay, and uh thank you, Mr. Garner, for uh staying on the call and helping us through all of the zoning board of appeals.
You're welcome.
Items. And Deb, I will get you a list. Um I did work with the town clerk to make sure that I had term limits correct, uh in case that came up as a question this evening. And I will make sure I get that information to you for the uh annual appointments uh document that comes before the board of selectmen. Hi, with that, it looks like we are on to department reports, and I will turn things over to the town administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening, everybody. Uh I'm gonna start off tonight staying on the development track and uh let everybody know that there'll be a traffic commission meeting tomorrow at three thirty PM via Zoom. The traffic commission, the only thing on the agenda for that meeting will be Cumberland Farms' review of the the traffic study that was performed as as part of the development work. Uh that will also be Chief Kelly's first time chairing our traffic commission. So once again, that's uh on Zoom tomorrow at three thirty, that is the only item on the agenda. Review the Cumberland Farms traffic development uh submittal. I'm gonna turn our attention uh this evening right now to public health. Uh we are now in a in a lull in terms of receiving vaccine from the state. This was pretty much anticipated a a couple of weeks ago as um the ability to actually execute and vaccinate uh has kind of caught up with supply at this point. Uh even with the Johnson and Johnson vaccine being introduced into the uh supply chain, there's now three active uh and viable uh vaccines. All three have been distributed here in the Berkshires, in fact, the St. Elizabeth's uh clinic site, uh the one where Adams residents and the Northern Berkshire community tends and and where myself and others from uh town government and and the town participate. Uh we were the first in a county to to issue the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. Uh so for what that's worth in this uh public health war, uh we felt that was a little bit of an honor to be be able to do that. But we are in a lull. Uh I believe there was a a small clinic uh yesterday. And uh there's no clinics now scheduled officially until March twenty-fifth. Should the supply chain kick up, uh we anticipated a ramping up in the next couple of weeks. Uh we'll be adding clinics as, well, I should say, the uh vaccination collaborative will be adding clinics to that. You also may have heard today that uh the governor and the State Department of Public Health have announced the eligibility opening dates for the other categories that have been stated now for for quite some time. Not gonna go into what those dates are, um but they're spread out through the balance of March, uh and I believe one or two dates in April. So if you're w- wondering when you'll be uh eligible for a vaccine, please check out that website. Uh there's plenty of online resources to educate yourself in terms of eligibility uh and be ready to able to secure yourself an appointment at one of the available clinics. Uh I'm proud to say that as of right now, the uh Northern Berkshire Clinic, we estimate that we've probably vaccinated just over ten thousand uh people. We've issued about ten thousand uh doses. Uh on average, i- if folks are interested in some of the the data, we're averaging about a hundred and fifty people per hour. Uh we have eight vaccination stations, so our our process is uh pretty good. Um and on average, for an eight-hour day, at about a hundred and fifteen-hour, give or take, we're doing about one thousand one hundred and twenty-five people. That's been the most, I believe that was this past Saturday, uh the most that we've processed through. So um stay tuned, uh we anticipate probably early April, the cadence of vaccination clinics will will kick up. And our goal is to vaccinate as many people uh as possible. That's gonna require volunteer corps, so we're enjoying a lull for the next couple of days to rest up and and be ready to blitz this uh when we get vaccine. Last thing I have for this evening is is additional good news. As I've mentioned, or and as everyone's been, I'm sure, following in the in the national media, that our federal Congress had passed the American Rescue Plan that had a variety of different components to it. The one I'll speak to tonight is the one that involves local government. Depending upon how you do the calculation and depending upon the source that uh you use, it is entirely possible that Adams will receive about two-point-three million dollars from this legislation. There's about three different pots of money within the legislation that'll be funneled to Adams, either directly from the federal government uh via the federal government, because Berkshire County no longer has an organized government system. And then thirdly, from the the state. We're awaiting guidance along with verification as to how much money Adams will receive. And the guidance is very important, because that'll essentially dictate uh to us how we use that money. So once we're able to determine uh and verify exactly how much is uh headed our way, So once we're able to determine and verify exactly how much is headed our way, and then what the use restrictions are on it or the use availability is, we'll come back to the board with that, and we can have a pretty positive conversation about, you know, what to do with it. I can tell you that myself and staff have already been bouncing around a lot of different ideas. But this is, I think, you know, slightly better from the days of the 2008, 2009 era legislation where we thought we would be able to get this federal money. Instead, the federal money in that legislation was actually passed through existing programming chains such as CDBG, Chapter 90, etc., which did limit your usage to it. So we'll keep everyone informed on that. But that is the local impact to what you see happening in working at Washington. In terms of the COVID-19 saturation within the town of Adams, we're pleasantly gray, which is low, which is excellent. We want to stay there. I think the cautionary language to this is let's work hard to stay there and not unnecessarily bring us up into the green, up into the yellow or the red again. It's still an active virus. It still spreads very easily. Stay masked up. Stay distanced when you can. Use proper hygiene. It's just the safest way to go. We don't want to see those numbers go up. It affects the school district. It affects local businesses. We're doing really well. We're doing really well as a region, and I think that the formula that we have in place right now regionally and even just locally in Adams is working. Let's let it work. And let's see what happens, and we'll continue to adjust as we go. We get, you know, another month or so where we stay in the gray. You know, we'll see what happens there. But let's keep our fingers crossed that we're coming out of this long, long, local and national nightmare. That's all I have this evening for everybody.
Thanks, Jay. Any questions for Town Administrator Rick?
Nothing for me.
Good. John?
Jay, any expectations on when we may be receiving the funding from the government?
Best, you know, it's just a guesstimate. You can never, don't bet, ever bet anything on this. We think we might see the smaller, I think it was a smaller amount of money that was reported on in the Berkshire Eagle about two week additions ago. That might be about $700,000, I think. We might see that one first by the end of June. I'm not sure what the exact language is in the federal legislation. The other pots of money, I believe, might actually be spread out in two distributions. So we might actually not see that for, say, a year or so. And I know the usage on it is, as of right now, we're told we can use that money all the way through fiscal 2024. So it's not like we got to get it and use it and burn it, you know, quickly and rush whatever. So that's our best guess as of right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, anything for Jay?
Yes, and they can just be kind of quick answers. Any news on the mobile station? Anything to report on Memorial School? The RFP? And what is your thoughts or the board's thoughts about kind of thinking about reopening Town Hall to some capacity?
In terms of Memorial, we haven't received any formal RFPs yet. In fact, Donna Seazin wanted my opinion today as to whether or not if we should just extend the open period for that for a period of time. We've had a couple of other new inquiries. So we'll probably do that. That's the short answer with Memorial. In terms of opening Town Hall, we don't receive a lot of criticism for it. We're still functioning remotely. We would like to open it at some point. I just think it's premature to do that right now. I think we'd like to wait a little longer and see if the gray classification holds for a period of time. And then if we do open up, I think we'll open the door, you know, proverbially, a little at a time as we go. I just want to reiterate for everybody, we are open by appointment. The goal is not to just allow the doors open so everyone just waltzes in at the same time. So if somebody really does want to meet face to face, the entire staff's willing to do that. We have a protocol to do that. Just call the respective office that you're looking to meet, send an email, and make those arrangements, and you actually get front door service right there. So that's, and Joe, what was the, oh, the mobile station?
Yeah.
No, not yet. We're trying to determine exactly what we think the total cost is going to be to demo the building and how we're going to, you know, pay for that. We have a couple of different ways to do it. So that's what we're working on now with the mobile station.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Jay. So we'll move on to Town Council.
All right, thank you. Since my last report on March 3rd, I received and examined an inquiry from staff concerning a Public Records Act request. After asking and receiving answers to a few questions, I responded to that request. I reviewed the filing by Mr. Piaghi regarding the potential conflict of interest, and I reviewed a proposed amendment to regulations promulgated by the Board of Health, and I responded to the board chair.
Any questions? Thank you. Any questions for Town Council? Rick?
No.
John?
No.
Joe?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. Rick?
I have nothing.
John?
Just to mention, Madam Chair, that next week for the BRPC, we have several meetings. The full BRPC meeting is next week, the FPO meeting. We also have a budget meeting. So several meetings next week. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Joe?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. I'll just report that I did attend the school committee's public hearing on their budget, Housick Valley Regional School District, sorry. Their public hearing about the budget that they had presented. They have requested to sit down with the Budget Subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen as we did a couple of weeks ago. So I will work to schedule that for next week. John, we'll look at your availability. Now, you've mentioned you have a number of meetings, but we'll get something scheduled because they will vote on that on March 29th. The school committee votes on their budget. And I also attended the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting last week where they reviewed the two cases in front of them. One was with regard to the at-home occupation up on Upper Linden and getting that permit for Shire Cottage Bakery. And I know that that was reported in a couple of different places. So, and then the other one was the cannabis cultivation facility in the industrial park. That's all I have. So we'll go ahead and move on to announcements and good of the order. Rick, do you have anything?
Oh, nothing.
John?
Oh, nothing to add.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, I just have one thing I want to discuss, and I'm going to try to use kids gloves this time with it. There was just something that the town received $60,000 for rapid recovery funds. That's to do a check on the downtown, what we can do to better it. And I was a little bit concerned about who was the spokesman for the group. I just want to say that, and I have to mention names because that's the only way I can put forth what I'd like to, Stephen Stenson. And some of the quotes that he had in I Berkshires Report, being the spokesman for this group, were a little disturbing to me. He used things like financial apocalypse, that, you know, we got to work together to make Adams a better place, and which I agree. And the problem is that the Masters Block was bought 10 years ago to the day almost. It was bought in March. And there hasn't been a store in there. There hasn't been a person living in an apartment. And I love this community a lot. And to have a spokesman who is telling us the way business should be isn't a good example. And the last time that he came in front of us, it was going to be Wellness and Food and Wellness Hub. And you look in there, and the tables are all still got the, you know, the tablecloths on them, and there's beautiful signs in the window about what they plan on doing. I'm all for that, but the proof's in the pudding, and I'm just at my wit's end with that project. I don't want to get in the weeds with it as much as I have in the past, but it really bothers me. And to see this gentleman being the spokesman for downtown and how businesses should proceed and how people should do it, I just feel that he's the wrong spokesman. And I had to get that out of myself because it's really bothering me. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
So Joe, to that point, I have talked to Jay as well as Becky. Well, I spoke with Donna first in community development. Becky Ferguson has been, will be the point person from Town Hall. That will be working on this grant. The grant goes to Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. They are in the process of assigning somebody. Once that is all determined, we will ask those folks to come and meet with the Board of Selectmen to give us a little bit more information about this grant that was received so that we better understand all of that. So that is coming forward at an upcoming agenda. I did speak with Donna and Jay about that today.
Okay, thank you.
Who wrote the grant?
Jay, do you want to speak to the process of the grant? I know that there were a few collaborators on that grant application.
It's a combination of Pro Adams, Town of Adams, and the entity that is essentially Downtown Adams, which is, I believe, set up by the Stensons in order to do it. So it was a collaborative application for it in order to do that. A letter of support was drafted by the town. A letter of support was drafted by the Pro Adams Group in order to do that. It was actually a collaborative application. But Stephen and Holly were the point persons on that.
So the town wasn't the lead on this? The downtown business group was? Education, that's what I'm looking for.
Yes, this is essentially a grassroots application from our business community, most centered on Park Street, Summer Street area, asked for the town's endorsement to apply for the grant. We knew that the money would not be going to the group. We knew the money would not be coming to the town. We knew that it was technical assistance. We knew that it was planning support. And we knew that the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission was likely to be the designated entity to actually execute on it. Stephen and Holly, along with Pro Adams, Tim Berdick, those folks, Ray Gargan, all of those folks, Dave Basilian, they will all be involved in collecting the data that's needed. So although I concur with Joe in terms of ensuring that we all speak with the positive, optimistic narrative that we have, I think going forward, once we're able to actually build that collaboration into a actual working collaboration, I think that narrative will be more in line with exactly what it is that we want to do that. We can't necessarily not have that narrative without Stephen and Holly involved. As Joe said, it's a key building for sure. So we hope that this is a good way to get everybody onto the same page and work together with the same goal, which is to have a thriving economic downtown. So just, that's essentially, it's a collaborative planning grant for it. And our business community will have the opportunity to participate and give positive feedback. In fact, Donna and I and Christine were speaking today about the Town of Adams attempting to host a forum where people can come in and give that community input. We thought that might be a good use for Adams Memorial, etc. We just, as everything still is with COVID-19, we got to work through logistics.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'll just announce that next week there won't be a workshop or a meeting of the full Board of Selectmen. So it is a good week for any Subcommittee meetings that you might have or would like to schedule. So the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is, it looks like it'll be Wednesday, March 31st. It'll be a workshop at 6:00 PM, and I'm just working on the agenda for that now. But it looks like it'll be with community development folks.
Should, excuse me, should I want to get something on there? Would it be all right to bring it forward?
For the workshop?
Yeah.
Sure. Yep, if you wanted to email that or?
Yep, I have to make some calls first, but I'm hoping to get something about the MVP program that we're in along with Williamstown on private landowners for carbon sequestration for, and to see how that works. But I have to make some calls.
Okay. About how much time do you think would need to be allotted?
That I don't know. I will stay in contact with you, and it will be in the very near future. We still have time.
Sounds good. Excellent. Thank you very much. If there's nothing else to come before the board, a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Where's my Rick? Do I have a second? Second by John. Roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. We are adjourned at 8:27 PM. I thank you very much for your time this evening, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks.